Okay, so first we have toys for Howro. Blocks, blocks. Oh, get your circle. What do you want? Circle. Okay, get pa. Get what do you want? Circle. Oops! Okay. Tapos meron tayong fuzzy wire. So ang gagawin ni Howro, hawakan 'yung fuzzy wire. Ipapasok 'yung... Ah, 'to. Hold it, hold it. Oops! It's okay. Careful. Ipapasok 'yung ball. Yay! Wow, the ball is inside. Okay. Oh, si Howro rin naman. Papasok mo 'yung ball. There oh, there oh. Oops, oops. Once more, once more. It's okay. Pasok mo 'yung ball. Look. Yay! Oh, you have your fuzzy wire. Oh. One more, one more. Oops, careful. There's a hole. Oh, look. One more, one more. Pasok 'yung cube. Look. I want you to look, look. Look, look. Oh, look. Oops, oops. Look, look, look. Look, look. Look. There. Good job! Pinasok ni Howro. Exercise po 'yan for eye hand coordination. One more. Oh, you get... Oh, you get one. This one. No, this one. Here. Hold it. Put it here. Look, look, look. Careful. Look, look. It's okay. It's okay. Look, look, look. Look. I want you to look. Oh, careful, careful. Yay! Good job! Oh, get one more. Get one more. One more, one more. Okay. Oh, put it here. Look. Howro, I want you to look. Hold it. Hold it. Look. I want you to look, look. Look, Howro, look. Yay! Oh, one more, one more. Get pa. Get... Oh, here. Oh, hold it. Give me your hand. Give me your hand. Okay, hold it. Ah, hold ba 'to? Yan. Oh, look. You look, you look. Look, look. Where? Where is it? There's the hole. Oh, look. Howro, you have to look. Look, look. Oh, look. Look. Like that. Good job! Okay pa. You have your fuzzy wire na. Okay. Good job. Say hi to them. Hi! Those are fuzzy wires. Hindi pa siya masyadong magaling sa eye hand coordination. Pero kailangan niyang mag-practice. Ah, cover na. No more na. You don't like this na? Oh, you put it back. Oh, put it back. Here. Okay. Good job. Okay. I have some more toys for you. You wait. Hindi na no more watching TV, ha? No more watching TV. I have new toys for Howro. Mama bought this last week para kay Howro. I have animals. Ganun kaming animal cards. Lion. Oh, kunin siya sa animals. No tapping, baby. No tapping. Eto favorite niya. Cat. Dog.
Ya.
Ya. That's a lion. You like the lion? I have a dolphin. 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 Tapos, we also have... Okay, bird. Diba? Maraming animal si Howro. Then we have... Oh, ito favorite mo 'yan. Elephant. Yan, favorite niyang elephant. Chicken. Yes, a lot of animals. Oh, you wait. Oh, favorite niya Howro. Yan talaga ang favorite niya. No tapping, baby. No tapping. Okay. So 'yan muna 'yung nilalabas nating cards. Okay. Hawakan ni Howro si turtle. Alright? Give mama turtle? Good job. Okay. It's okay. Look, I have chicken. Wait, wait. And cat and bird. Get mo si chicken. Get chicken. Where's chicken? Get chicken? Ano? Hindi pwede. Wala. It's okay. You like turtle? Mamaya si turtle. Okay, get chicken. Where's chicken? No. Okay, kanta ha. This is chicken. Oh, you get chicken. You give... Give the chicken. Get chicken. Give mama chicken. Okay, okay. It's okay. It's okay. Oh, here's chicken. Oh, here's chicken. You like chicken? Okay. Now you get cat. Where's cat? Cat. Oh no, that's bird. That's bird. That's cat. Okay. Oh, you want turtle? Oh, I will give you turtle, ha? This is elephant. Dog. Turtle. Favorite niya talaga si turtle. Kinukuha niya lagi si turtle. Okay, so sayo muna si turtle, ha? Pero I want you to get elephant. Howro, get elephant. Howro, look at me. Oh, you get elephant. Where's elephant? No, just one. Oh, this is dog and this is elephant. Howro, look. Where's elephant? Get elephant. Where's elephant? Get elephant. Howro, get elephant? Yes, you have to get elephant. Howro, get elephant. Howro... Get elephant. Ay, kunin ko si turtle. I will get turtle from you. Oh, you get elephant. Oh no, that's dog. This is dog. Okay, again, again. Where is elephant? Elephant. Look. Where's elephant? Where's elephant, Howro? You like turtle? Oh, you give me turtle? Okay, this is turtle. I will put turtle here. Okay, turtle is here. Where's elephant? That's elephant. Okay. You really like turtle? Nakita niya si turtle. Dapat ata hindi ko pinakita agad si turtle. It's okay. Yan, si turtle lagi niyang kinukuha. I will get... Give you something else. Sige, 'yung mga kilala niyang animals. I have... I have butterfly. You know about butterfly, diba? Butterfly and... Butterfly and crocodile. Get... Get butterfly. Where's butterfly? Where's butterfly? Yes, it's a turtle. Oh, get butterfly. Where's butterfly, Howro? Howro, where's butterfly? Si turtle talaga. Oh, you give... Pi turtle na. Ayoko na nga niyan. Howro na. No more turtle. It's okay. It's okay. We will play with turtle later, okay? Or nawala mo ng turtle kasi Howro does not listen. Okay? Mag-aalphabet muna kami until mamalay... Mawala sa isip niya si turtle. Okay. This is apple. Okay. So wait lang, baby, wait. Meron kaming crayons for apple. Apple is color... Okay. Oh, you color apple. Apple na. Oh, no, no, no. Apple lang, apple. Apple lang. Oh. It's okay. Hold apple. Hold ang crayon. Oh, careful. Careful ang color kay apple. You look... Look at apple, oh. Look at apple. You look at apple. Oh, careful, careful. Hold... Hold the crayon well. Oh, hold the crayon well and color apple. You look at apple. Very good! It's okay, color apple. It's okay, you color apple. It's okay. Wala ka na sa mood. Oh, sige, I will give you something else. It's okay. How about me color turtle? I have another turtle. Si turtle. Yan. So magka-color kami ng turtle. Ano color ni turtle? Oh, you have... You have your crayons here. Ano color ni turtle? Put turtle here. Ano color ni turtle? Ano color? Color ano? Green. Good job! Oh, you're coloring turtle na. Good job! Okay. Idaba natin si turtle dito. And then you color turtle. Oh, you look at turtle. Color mo si turtle. Yay! Color turtle. Yan pa. Meron pa oh. You look at turtle. Look. Look at turtle. Look at turtle. Oh, dito pa oh, turtle. Good job! Color turtle pa. Color pa. Oh. Oh no. Pick up the crayon. Pick up the crayon. Okay, now you sit down. Oh, color turtle na. Color turtle pa oh. Wala pa siyang color dun. 'Yung hands pa ni turtle oh. Yan. Oh, 'yung head pa ni turtle. 'Yung head, color turtle pa. It's okay. Oh, color turtle pa. Yan. Tapos na. Finish na. Show them turtle. Show turtle to them. This is turtle with Howro's crayons. Hawak ka color mo pa si turtle. Oh, say color turtle pa. You like coloring turtle? Alam niya na green si turtle. So he pick... He pick out the green crayon. Gusto mo't ka na because you saw turtle. Yan. Paborito niya talaga ang mga turtle. Kahit sa drawing lang. Oh, totoong turtle. Color mo si turtle. Color. Sige. You look at turtle. Oh, hindi pwede diyan sa table, ha? Here pa oh. Here pa. Here pa oh. Look. Ay, wala pa sa head, oh. Very good. Good job! Hindi pa namin ma-figure out kung left-handed siya or right-handed. Minsan left means right. Here pa oh. Yay! Good job! Oh, gents namin si papa ngayon. Nasa laptop siya. Let's... Let's show turtle to papa. Baro si mama. Baro, ha? Baro, thank you. There's turtle. Howro's coloring turtle, everyone. And turtle paint. Sige lang, color mo pa si turtle. Oh yan, left naman ngayon. Kanina, right. Oh, left. Sige. Look, you look at turtle when you're coloring. Finish na? Finish coloring? Give mama the crayon. Okay. Oh, you... You put the crayon sa box pala. Oh, you put the crayon in the box. Put it here. Okay, thank you. Good job. Natapos na niyang i-color si turtle. Oh, sige sa'yo na 'yang turtle na yan. Pero dapat magpoeos ka, ha? Okay, let's play again. Let's play. Bibigyan ko siya ng mga dominos. Para makita niya. Pakita ko kung anong gagawin niya. Kasi bawal mag-lining. Sometimes nagla-lining si Howro. So kailangan, pag binigyan pa siya ng dominos, hindi siya magla-like. Kailangan may iba siyang gagawin. Wow, we have kuyas dominos. Okay, we have dominos here. You wanna play dominos? You wanna play dominos? Open. Open it, open. Open it, open. Okay. Play with the dominos. Oh, stand mo 'yung dominos. Stand mo. No, no, no. Like this. Yan. Stand mo 'yung dominos here. Like that, oh. Oops. Okay, get... Get more dominos. Get. Don't worry, turtle is here. Oh, yan. I'll get more dominos. Like this, oh. Mama's playing. Ah, you don't like. Okay, so change activity tayo. Ayaw niya ng dominos. Cover na daw, oh. How about animals? Meron pa si mama ang pinrepair na animals. Wow, we have many animals. May lid siya sa animals. Itong isa sa favorite niya, si crocodile. You like crocodile? Ah, you like that? What's that? That's a pig. That's a wild pig. What else? Yan, polar bear. Polar bear. Eto si crocodile, oh. Iit na niya yan. What? Polar bear. Kakainin ni crocodile. You like the polar bear? Oh, you have some animals tayo. You have dinosaur pa. You like dinosaur? Okay, and then... Ayaw niya talaga bitawas si turtle. I have a small dinosaur. You don't like the dinosaur? Chicken. You don't like chicken? Rhino. No, rhino. Hippo. No, hippo. Ayaw niya. Ano ba 'to? Jaguar. No, ayaw din. Okay, so si crocodile at si pig lang. Ayaw mo din 'yan. Let's play pa. Play pa nga tayo eh. Let's play pa nga tayo eh. You want to sing? Lalain ko dito. Tingnan natin kung anong gagawin ni Howro. Yan pa, ang inaalibas ni Howro. Yay! Many animals! Yay! Many animals! What do we do with the animals? Oh, you play with the animals? Dino. Kito. Hippo. Crocodile. Dinosaur. Bear. Hippo. Jaguar. Don't cover your ears. Crocodile? Closing your eyes pa. No tapping.
Dinosaur.
Dinosaur. First time po siyang marinig na mag-dinosaur. Actually, we have a big dinosaur here. That's your dinosaur.
Try it here. Watch it.
Chicken.
Hippo.
Hippo. That's a bear. How about the big dinosaur? Ah, tinatago ko si bear sa ilaw niya. Asens si bear. You get bear. Get bear. Oh, thank you. You're giving me bear. Oh, you get dinosaur. Where's dinosaur? Tinatago mo talaga si bear. Why are you hiding there? You're hiding there? Okay, I'm gonna get turtle. No, okay. You like turtle so much? Okay. Where are you going? Where are you going? You sit down. Let's lock. You sit down. You sit down first. Okay. Finish playing now. You put that here. If you're finish playing. You put that here. Oh, you put... You put crocodile inside. Yan, you put everything here. Okay, okay. Where's dinosaur? What's this? Dinosaur. Cover na? Okay, babalikan natin 'yung time markers niya. Dinosaur! Look, Howro. Oh, you remove them. You get... You get the ball. Okay, you put it here. Oops. Oops, pick it up. Pick it up. Ay, pick it up. You're dropping it. Pick it up. One more. Pick it up. There's one more. Pick it up. Okay, thank you. Okay. Yeah, simple in fuzzy wire and blocks na my holes. Okay, can you give me turtle please? Thank you. So I will put turtle here. Yan, turtle is here. Now you hold the fuzzy wire. Okay, hold the fuzzy wire. Hold it. And then you get the block. Pick it up. Pick up the block. And you put it inside. Good job. One more, one more. One more. Oh, you... You put it here. Good job. One more. You have to do it. Careful, careful. Good job! Good job! Okay, bukas ulit ha? You have to practice eye hand coordination. So good job today. High five. Please lock. Good job. Tomorrow hindi ko nilalaba si turtle kasi distracted pala siya kay turtle. So I have other animals. Kilala niya si dinosaur. So that's good. Let's give Howro other... This one. This is pig. That's pig. Say pig. Don't fold it. Pig. What's that? Don't folding. This is pig. Don't folding. Pig. You like pig? This is pig. Remember pig, ha? This is crocodile.
Oink.
Oink? Oink? Yes, pig says oink.
Oink.
Oink? Sige, you make sounds. This is a duck.
Oink.
Oink? Old MacDonald had a farm. Iya-iya-yo. And on his farm he had a pig. Iya-iya-yo. With an oink-oink here. And an oink-oink there. Here a night, there a night. Everywhere an oink-oink. Oink? Old MacDonald had a farm. Old MacDonald had a farm. Howro, old MacDonald had a farm. Iya-iya-yo. Oink pala ang sabi ng pig. How about the duck? Duck. Remember the duck? Five little ducks went out one day. Over the hill and far away. Mama duck said... Mama duck said quack, 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 quack. But only four little ducks came back. One. Two. Three. Four. Four little ducks went out one day. Over the hill and far away. What? No more pig. Mother duck said quack, 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 quack. But only three little ducks came back. Howro, po put... Howo, look at, look at me, hi. Oh kissing mama, why, what do you want, where are you kissing mama? What? You want the duck? No? Crocodile? You want crocodile? Oh, don't fold it. Yan, lipad na, oh you pick up turtle, lipad si turtle. Okay, thank you. Anong kinakanta mo? But are you singing? Oh sige, magsing muna tayo. Come here, oh stand up, magsising si mama at si Howo. Stand up, stand up. Howo is going to sing. Come here. Come here. When you're happy and you know it, clap your hands. When you're happy and you know it, clap your hands. When you're happy and you know it, clap your hands. Clap your hands, clap your hands. When you're happy and you know it, clap your hands. When you're angry and you know it, stomp your feet. Very good! When you're angry and you know it, stomp your feet. Stomp your feet. Stomp your feet. When you're angry and you know it, stomp your feet. When you're angry and you know it, stomp your feet. When you're angry and you know it, stomp your feet, stomp your feet. When you're angry and you know it, stomp your feet, good job! Oh, jump, jump na. When you're happy and you know it, jump, jump, jump. When you're happy and you know it, jump, jump, jump. When you're happy and you know it, jump, jump, jump. Jump! Jump, 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 when you're happy and you know it, jump, jump, jump. Jump, jump, jump! Yay, good job, high five, hug mama. Please bump pa? Kakagumama mo, oh. Okay. Five. Oh, you, enough na for today? Okay, enough na daw for today, naka-thirty-three minutes na kami without break. So that's it for today, sit down, muna before we end, you sit down first. You say bye-bye to them, bye-bye. Say bye-bye, look at the camera, say bye, bye.